You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 24th meeting for the LaPorte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
Good evening. I'd like to call the November 24th, 2025 regular council meeting in order. Please silence all cell phones and stand for the pledge. Mrs. Heath, if you would leave.
Certainly. I pledge to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, and never taken out of its control.
Mr. Auditor, the roll, please.
I'll call out the first new member, Jennifer Heath.
Present.
Jimmy Pressle.
Present.
Mark Yagowski.
Present.
Mike Mullenhauer.
Present.
Justin Keel.
Present.
Brett Kessler.
Present.
And President Adam Karanka.
Present.
We have a quorum. Everyone is here.
Thank you. Do I have any recommendations regarding the agenda?
Mr. President, I have a few corrections on the agenda for this evening. Number one, on the first page, I'd like to remove the 2026 salary ordinance from the agenda for this evening. Number two, I would like to add under new business, LaPorte County Treasurer Dan Marini concerning Comet 5 to Comet 6 employee. Number two, I would like to add LaPorte County Treasurer Dan Marini regarding second deputy. Number three, I'd like to add County Surveyor John Mathewson for permission to hire. Number four, I'd like to add Mike Poland, Building Commissioner. And page two is correct. Page three, I'd like to remove County Auditor from the agenda and also I'd like to remove LaPorte County MS 4 from the agenda. Those are my corrections for this evening.
All right. Any further corrections or additions? So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kessler, second by Mrs. Heath. All in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This time I'll entertain a motion regarding the October 27th minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kessler, second by Mrs. Heath. All in favor of accepting the meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is now open. No one from the public? Darlene, is that a hand raised or is that your cursor? Clerk Stevens.
I don't think I had my hand up. I'm sorry.
Well, we got that tested out. All right. Thank you, Heather.
Sorry.
No worries. If that's all for public comment, public comment is now closed. Department head reports.
Any department heads who want to approach?
All right. Moving quickly. Department head reports are now closed. Liaison reports. Mr. Pressle.
Yep. Few items. Plan Commission, we have a data center workshop tomorrow night here. Comprehensive plans moving forward. They are still taking in input from county residents. Two exciting things happened in the county. Homeward Bound Villages had ribbon cutting last weekend, so kind of nice to see some county dollars getting put to work and almost open for residents there. Paladin has an open house coming up December 5th also. Just kind of wanted to bring those people's attention.
Thank you. Mr. Yagowski.
None at this time, sir.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
None at this time.
I understand the newness, but Mrs. Heath, do you have anything you'd want to add?
I have none at this time.
All right. Mr. Keel.
Brief update for me, just of course speaking with my different liaison assignments, but I think the big thing I want to draw attention to is just that we got our 1782 notice about 10 days ago. Today's our final day to respond to that if we had any changes we wanted to propose. I think a notable thing to point out in that is between our adopted budget, we anticipated or advertised as part of that budget that we would collect $44 million in property tax levy revenue. The 1782 notice revises that to 42.3 million. So this is a $1.7 million reduction in property tax levy revenue from what was initially advertised versus what is now being put into the final version. That's not necessarily unusual to have that reduction just because we estimate high during the budget process, but it's noteworthy also because it does reduce our estimated ending cash balance for the general fund. So we are looking at a budget deficit of around $6 million for next year for the general fund. So just want to make sure that we're aware of that going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
Attended RDC meeting, got sworn in on that committee, went well, and that's the only thing I've got for right now.
All right. And I'm going to pass. Liaison reports, moving on to correspondence.
You all received the letter from Sheriff Ron Heek concerning the sheriff's commissary fund, the report that he supplied. And any other minor correspondence has been about some events that have been coming up and they've been forwarded to you by email.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, we have the 2025 amended salary ordinance in front of us. So, Mr. Auditor, if you wouldn't mind just walking through briefly. I'm going to turn here.
Yeah, I'm holding mine up now. First of all, it was a great opportunity to get it to you early in the month so that this way that you had time to look at it. Couple of things that are noted, we learned that you did not need to keep names on salary ordinances, so the names have been changed because quite a few, the pages required the changes because we tried to avoid the name changes of making them as an adjustment. We really focused on the dollar amount. The other thing that we did add to this salary ordinance, the amended salary ordinance is that we gave you the date of the change when there was a change in personnel. So some go all the way back to March because we didn't want to start doing this every month. So now this way, when the State Board of Account comes in, they can look and see the amended salary ordinance and they can go back and they can identify the period, whatever payroll period they're auditing, and they can match it to the salary ordinance as it has been amended. No one has asked to come see anything or talk about it until today when I had some phone conversations with some people about it, maybe last Friday as well, but no one has come to see that we matched it up with the names. We do prepare this in Excel. We do have the names there so that we can verify who they are, but we hide it for publication. I was asked today about salaries or what we pay people at the end of the year, if that reporting gateway will have their names. Absolutely does. It's just that on a salary ordinance doesn't, and I found this out from talking to the other auditors around the state, and they are also surprised at how many changes that we also have too. But they do theirs on a more regular basis and sometimes, and the county that I've been talking to is like half the size of ours, but the person has had quite a few years of experience in the auditor's office and has been very helpful in getting some additional guidance as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the vast majority of these changes are related to step changes during the year, right?
So, not the vast majority, but there were a lot of step changes, but also we had a lot of retirements this year. So one of the things that happens is somebody who's at a step 10, now we have a person in a step 1, or maybe a step 3 when they transfer over. In the case of my office, we had people that are higher steps than the people that they replaced due to a couple of retirements. And so therefore, you know, those people have to be reported as well. So it goes both ways.
One potential suggestion for making it easier to compare these now that the names aren't on here is maybe like assign some of these positions or all of the positions like an employee ID number or something so that we can keep track of like this position is the same across multiple salary ordinances. Just a thought.
We'll talk more on it because I'm not sure I'm quite understanding what you're trying to ask, but I'll be more than happy to pick up on.
Sure.
Because I know it's very difficult when you look at.
Yeah, like some of these positions, there's, you know, 10 jailers, like 15 or more on here, so.
Yeah, we have the departments clearly layout. You have their title and you have what their level is, what position they are. The question is whether or not we say that it's exhibit A, B, C through Q, depending on what they are, you know, that might be to put a little code in there to help maybe to go back to those salary grids. I'm not sure, but we could, like I said, we can figure out a better, anything that makes us better is fine by me, and if it's easier, it's fine by me too.
All right. Any other questions from council?
Mr. President, I move to accept the salary ordinance with the caveat of striking under auditor 0102, the second to last line.
That was struck.
Auditor, pardon me?
That was struck.
Okay.
On the copy that's coming around, it struck.
Okay. All right. So I move to approve.
All right. A motion to approve by Mr. Kessler. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Now, just as point of order, making sure I'm straight, Mr. Beege, being that this is an ordinance, do we have to go open this for a reading? Or since it's an amendment, we should just be accepted as is?
Right.
Just making sure I'm clear. All right. So I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Second. We had one.
Two.
I've 30. I'm sorry.
All right. All in favor of accepting the amendment to ordinance 2025 11A, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. With no old business, we'll move on to new business. And we're starting with the. Yes. Michigan Township Assessor's Office request permission to hire commercial income clerk. Is Brett in here today? Has anybody received any correspondence or any communication from Michigan Township Assessor on his position?
Move to table it.
All right. Motion table, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to table by Mr. Kessler, second by Mr. Yagowski. Vote.
You've already granted permission to it, right?
Monique Thomas, HR Director. Mr. Bannick and Mrs. Boo, his chief deputy, they have asked to replace the position that was vacant. So that is the commercial income. And they have already began the process.
Correct. They were approved to go ahead and begin the process of seeking a replacement. However, most of the time it comes down to questions related to the position necessary or not, needed or not.
Oh, okay. I was unaware there were questions, that's why. I'm like, I'm here if you guys want to know why, but it was a vacant position, so.
If someone can get ahold of Mr. Bannick and ask that he join on Zoom, would we be willing to entertain this later in the meeting, revisit it so he has a chance to address this this month?
We can table it, yeah.
Yeah.
We revisit it.
Okay. Then, all in favor of tabling the item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Moving on, permission to hire tax roll clerk by the LaPorte County Auditor. Mr. Auditor.
So this position, what happened was we had cross-trained people in our office. So we had a person retire at a higher level at the tax sale clerk position, and so what we did was we moved the person from the tax roll clerk into this new, into that position because she was already trained better than, and we had other candidates from outside, but you had somebody with knowledge. And so now we're looking to replace her position, and these are people that are constantly asking, answering questions at the window and taking care of the various credits that people are allowed or exemptions that they're allowed.
Okay. Any questions from council? That, I'll take motion.
Make motion approve.
Yeah.
Motion approved by Mr. Pressle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Six, one. All right. Moving on to request by the Treasurer's Office to move first deputy from Comet 5 to Comet We've all discussed this in length in previous session. If you have any questions for the Treasurer, here's your chance. Mr. Marini, how are you?
Good. How you doing this evening?
Doing well. So any questions for the Treasurer at this point?
If there's no questions, and feel free to jump in, Mr. Beege, but I'll make a motion to, motion of support to revise this at a subsequent meeting in next month, next meeting, for his first deputy position to be revised from a Comet 5 to a Comet 6. Does that cover all of the?
All right. So I have a motion by Mr. Keel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any discussion? Keep in mind, this motion of support would have to be further enacted at next meeting with revised salary ordinance.
And additional appropriation.
Correct.
Necessary.
So all in favor of the motion of support signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Oh, I got the two, but you asked for roll call. Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Nay.
Ms. Heath.
Nay.
Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
And Mr. Yagowski.
Nay.
Okay. Then it's a 4-3 vote, it carries.
Thank you.
To go and do the further, to take this to the next step. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, permission to hire second deputy for the Treasurer's Office.
Got a question. Yes, sir. We got the person over to Michigan City yet?
Kelly's been there all week.
About that person, the, what's the one with 5 to 6? Is that Kelly or?
Yes.
Okay. She's going to Michigan City from now on.
She's been there all week.
All time. Thank you.
Is the plan to stay there?
As of right now, yes.
So this is the second deputy left, this is the person that was previously in Michigan City?
Correct.
Okay.
And they are the one to handle our surplus, bankruptcies, garnishments, and escrow.
Okay. Any further questions? With that, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the filling of the second deputy position.
Motion by Mr. Keel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it with the amendment to that, if you're okay with it, that the first deputy stays there as required based on job description.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I'll accept that amendment.
I'll second that then.
So I have a motion, a second, amended. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'll need a roll call.
I agree.
Mr. Yagowski.
Nay.
Thank you. Mr. Pressle.
Aye.
Ms. Heath.
Nay.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
Nay.
Mr. Keel.
Aye.
Mr. Kessler.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka.
Aye.
Okay, 4-3 vote to do it, to allow it, to fill the position. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Going to do the survey here now?
Yes, sir. So, moving on for the survey, permission to hire an office deputy for the Surveyor's Office. Good evening.
This is to replace a individual that I had to let go. It's a standard position. I don't know if you have questions, specific questions, I can address them. We have a small department. Each person has got tasks and there's work to be done, and it's a position that we need to have our work done.
With your current staffing, you have the opening in the office deputy, their primary, listed in the salary ordinances is an office deputy.
Yes.
Okay. So the primary role of that office deputy, what are they doing for you day in, day out?
It's to pretty much do all the functions that the office does, the surveying office does, shares the workload that I have, answers to calls, looks up information in our records, provides that to surveyors and to property owners. It deals with correspondence, with realtors, pretty much anyone that has an interest in finding out information about parcels that are in the county. In addition, we do work with the section corners, which are the fundamental foundation of the identification of individual parcels throughout the county. There are two individuals that primarily do the physical labor of making sure that the monuments still exist, repairs the monument if necessary, provide documentation of the existence of monuments, and I eventually replace the monuments that have been stolen or destroyed.
So I want to back you up a second. That's the role of the office deputy or that's the role of the surveyor?
That.
Of the employed surveyors.
The, we have a crew chief that handles that primarily.
Okay.
But in addition, the documentation is pretty much distributed amongst other members in the department.
Okay.
There's a lot of paperwork to be handled.
Mr. Yagowski. So this person, well, just had not been there for a while, for whatever, we can't get into it, reasons why. So who was doing that? You also had a part-time person who's doing all this work. Who else besides the part-time person was doing this work?
It was distributed amongst the people. I did some of it myself, some of it was handled by Michael in the department.
Since you have the positions and you have the people using it, we need to try to keep our costs down. I think at this time, we really don't need this position, and that's my opinion, because you had gone months without this position. You have a part-time person who's doing the work. So I believe that we should, I believe we should hold off on this position at this time, but that's just my opinion.
I anticipate that there will be additional things that need to be done that currently are not being performed in the.
I like to see that. So if the future you come, you come back, that'd be great, in my opinion, but again, it's my opinion, but you need to have this upfront when you apply it for it. You are feeling, you've been doing the job without this person. Oh, anyway, thank you.
Additional questions?
You have to forgive me because I'm the new kid on the block here, but how long has this position been vacant?
Since Monday of last week.
Since Monday of last week?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe.
Are you asking two different questions? That's, the person was discharged at that time, but there was, the person that discharged was not in the office for a period of time. Yours, two different questions you're asking.
Thank you.
Right. The number of labor hours available from this person to do the functions was less than a full-time position, but that's, we have things that have backed up. Just this afternoon, I couldn't answer all the questions that came in. Someone came in and wanted all the information for a subdivision. I could not answer that request. There's someone working on a school project that asked for information on several subdivisions. That's also something I couldn't get accomplished today.
That stuff that would typically done by you or by this office person?
Well, the office person is not here. Certainly, the office person would have been doing some of this work, and I have set up a mechanism so that everyone in the office is aware of what's coming in the door. In the past, it was strictly to individual email accounts. I have set up an email account for the department that everyone has access to so they can keep track of exactly what's coming in the door and have an idea of exactly what our instantaneous needs are for handling paperwork. Basically, we handle paperwork and provide responses to people that have needs and desires for the paperwork.
So this office deputy was part-time then?
No, he was listed as a full-time person, however, he was taking extensive leaves.
Mr. Surveyor, I need to make sure that we keep employee performance type discussions out of this. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Keel.
Question on your part-time employee, how many hours a week are they working?
I don't understand the question. All the positions are listed as full-time. I have no one that's a part-time position.
Just looking at the salary ordinance, you have the surveyor, you, of course, your office deputy, which is the position in question. There's a party chief and instrument carrier, part-time employee.
No, though, those are all full-time. There's no part-time employee in a department. There's four individuals, myself and three others.
Who was the person that, you and I talked personally about this and I met with you? You said I have a part-time person, that was the computer I got for you, the part-time person. That's the exact quote. And Darlene heard this conversation.
In that case, I misspoke.
You misspoke about part-time. So you have a full-time person who can do this work then?
I'm sorry, full-time person?
He's not part-time, he's full-time, which is fine. So you have a full-time person who can do this work. Again, there's needs and wants, and I get that kind of conversation, but what you need somebody or want somebody, two different points. You did find without this position all year long, basically, anyway, you have another person that is doing this work, plus yourself, I get it, that's what your job is also to do it, I understand that. So again, there's needs and wants, and we have to, we have to, we have to be more prudent on what we're doing.
So to expand on your staff, so your party chief and your instrument carrier, what do they do on a day-to-day basis? Are they in the office or are they out in the field?
They are primarily out in the field, except during inclement weather where they do the paperwork involved in documenting the work that was done in the field.
So they're not doing the role of your office deputy in any way?
Not usually, no.
So.
They step in when a need arises because they're aware of what's going on in the office, but yes, their primarily task is to take care of section corners, to be out in the field and taking care of the monuments. We need to take care of 5% of our 2,700 roughly monuments every year, and they're out in the field, taking care of them, making sure that they exist.
So my primary concern is surveyors come and go, and it sounds like some of the institutional knowledge is held in that office deputy position. I mean, a lot of what you probably found out about how your office is being ran came from that individual, or they were the ones kind of holding it together when you took over from Mr. Hendricks?
I've been picking up bits and pieces from a variety of sources, and very seldom did I get information from the chief deputy.
So walk me through what the impact to your department would be if this position was eliminated. What would happen?
I would have to see. I had intentions of automating quite a bit of it so that it would not be reliant on the institutional knowledge contained by individual, so that there would be more possibilities for general public to access information directly.
So you're saying it is or it isn't a problem to have this position eliminated?
At this point, it would be a problem. Work with backup. I certainly could not keep up with everything that comes in the door just myself. I have duties elsewhere outside the office, and it was difficult to keep the office open from 8 to 4 and have a crew out in the field taking care of the section corners.
You say you have other responsibilities outside of the office and it's hard to maintain those hours. Does that have something to do with your pay? I mean, from looking at the salary ordinance here, your base pay is about $26,800. That's not, there's a little bit extra on top of that for stipends, right?
That is, yes.
Is that enough for you to live off of?
It's tight. It's very tight. You know, I happened to see a recent survey done by a consulting firm, and I'm below below what was, would be expected for that type of position.
What's a normal average pay for someone who's a, who's a surveyor that's non-licensed?
Um, I don't have that number in my mind, but it would be in the $70,000 category, unlicensed. A licensed surveyor would be approximately $500 more per year.
Did you say $70,000 for unlicensed?
Yes.
He shook his head.
Essentially, I, my pay is, is less than half of what the recommended level from a consulting firm, whose names I can't recall at the moment, but they do-
By Nureyin and Shealy?
Yeah, they do surveys for pretty much, for many counties, and, and including, I believe, LaPorte County. And they have a range of salaries based on, I believe, the, the average salary, and the low level of the range is 10% below the average, and the high recommended salary is 15% above the average. And I'm way outside, and if you were to double my pay, I'd still be below the low level.
Were you aware of what the prior surveyor made before coming to the office?
Um, he, well, on the, and according to the records, he was certainly below the level, I believe it was $40,000, but it's outs- I'm going by what this coun- the consultants are saying should be the proper level. Up until recently, I didn't have that information. That information became available less than a month ago.
But he was a licensed, he was a licensed surveyor and you're not, right?
Well, correct. And the survey done by the consultants includes both registered surveyors and surveyors that are not registered surveyors, and the difference in the salary is approximately $500 per year.
Did I hear you say something, maybe I misunderstood, something about a chief deputy a minute ago?
Um, that's the position that I am hoping to fill.
Office deputy.
I thought this was an office deputy.
It became office deputy, I believe, two years ago. For some reason, the name, the title was changed from chief deputy to office deputy two years ago, I was told, in 2022.
Which means you've only ever had an office deputy, you've never had a chief deputy.
I have never.
Mr. Yagalski.
So during the, excuse me, I don't remember everybody's name, and I apologize for this. During the budget hearing process, I asked you if you had any senior people working for you, and you said you didn't at the time, but you brought somebody in, and that gentleman was who, he was sitting next to you?
Tim Harold.
Tim Harold, and he, he, then when I asked him, he had 30 years of experience with this, so. You said, you said, this, this is not the person that, this person's still employed.
Yes.
So you have the experience, that's, that, you're, you're going with that you don't have the experience. This guy's been over 30 some years. You guys remember during the budget hearings, he answered all the questions for them. So we do have the expertise in there. This job had not been filled since January, basically, so, or they have not assigned any work since January, whatever terminology you want to use. I gotta stay cautious with what I'm saying, but the long and short of it, we've dealt so far without this position, and I just don't see a need of it.
Now, I'm not aware of all the work that the individual had been doing, because-
I'm not worried about that, so.
Okay.
We're not worried about that.
Have all of your questions been answered?
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny by Mr. Yagalski. Do I have a second by Mr. Mullenhauer? Any further discussion? The one comment that I have is I just want to assure that whichever way we go here, that we're assuring that the surveyor's office is continuing to be able to be, complete its role in county government.
Absolutely.
To assure that we've got the right people in the right places.
Absolutely.
Okay. All in favor of denying the request signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Vote count, please.
Yes, vote count, please.
To deny, nay.
Mr. Mullenhauer?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on with new business, we have the building commissioner, Mr. Mike Paul, in here to discuss his current role.
Good evening, council. I have some binders here. This is just a hard copy of what you've received digitally over the past couple of months. If I may approach, I can pass them on.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Who doesn't have another binder?
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, you've all received this information over the past several months. This is an ongoing situation that's been going on, and basically, we just have part of the salary that needs to be transferred from one account to another account. It is not an additional appropriation. It's already, it's already covered. I also had to go through a bunch of steps that were asked of me. You have a letter from the board president, you have a report from the personnel committee, you have a salary study, you have the old job description, the new job description, and you have an outline of how the duties have evolved over time. And I've spoken with many of you, I've reached out to all of you, email, phone, text, so we've had some good conversations. I wasn't able to get with all of you, so I assume that you don't, the ones I wasn't able to talk to, you don't have questions, but I am here now, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
So we've seen, you've sent quite a bit of documentation, we've talked on the phone a number of times. When it comes to the evolution of the role as you see it, has that occurred over the last four years? Has that occurred over the last 20 years? How has that evolution occurred?
There's multiple phases of evolution. Some of it has been from 2006 until now, and some of it is just over the last four years.
Okay. How much of that, let's just talk general ratios, right, of the general change? 50% has occurred in the last four years? Has it been 20%? How much of-
50% is a good, a good number, and it's all outlined in there. So, for instance, the floodplain part, that, that Senate bill was passed in June, so that's new, that's new requirements, and it's, it's basically the state putting extra duties on the locals and the education requirements that go along with the person that serves in that capacity.
So in our packet, we see a revised job description.
Yes.
Was this reviewed by the job valuation committee at all?
Yes.
Okay. What was the findings out of that meeting?
Uh, I attended the meeting, but I wasn't privy for their deliberation and discussion. Councilman Pressle was in on that, so maybe he could answer that.
Yeah, I believe we made a motion to move our recommendation up to council.
Okay.
So that's where we left it at in the job valuation committee meeting.
So it was unanimous in the personnel-
I don't remember if it was unanimous or not, but yeah, our recommendation was to move it up to council for us to deliberate up here.
Okay. Now, being in a unclassified position, obviously, the, the number is fluid, it's not something that goes within the, with the pay grid by the WIS guidelines like comment and whatnot. Don't let me hog the mic. If anybody else has questions, feel free.
I could jump in and, and do you a solid. If at any time that my expenses and revenue fall short, I'll give it up willingly. I'm fine with performance-based. I will double what that is, and I'm not asking for an additional appropriation.
So your current salary right now is $80,227, and it would revert back to $65,227 if nothing is otherwise done, and you're asking for it to stay at that $80,000 figure?
Correct. I'm just asking for it to stay as is.
Now, for history's sake, right, that initial bump from the 65 to the 80,000 was, was a split role, right? That had to do with advising as part of a three-position role related to MS4 because of the situation that department was in, and that has now dissolved, if you will. But that's where that initial bump came from. So now we're looking to support this $15,000 entirely with the roles and responsibilities of the building, building department itself.
Yes, that is correct. Now, and I believe that I've supplied the supporting documentation that shows that that's where the salary should have been or should be without that other role, but I perform that anyway, basically volunteer, so, which I've always done, every time I'm asked of me. You know, many councilmen and commissioners over the years have come to me to fix other departments or get involved where the county has fallen short, and as a public servant, that's what I do. I go where I'm needed.
Any questions from the remaining council? Mr. Pressle, oh, go ahead.
Yep, I had to make a motion to approve at the 81,250, as requested.
A motion by Mr. Pressle to amend to the 81,250. Now, which, when we talk about the sourcing of this, this is meant to be funded from which account number?
It can be, I believe it's 2067 contractor registration.
Mr. Auditor, can you-
The non-reverting.
Can you clarify account-wise, where we can take-
That was never checked for me, and we would need to get council to also confirm it. At this stage, we do not believe that you can take salary out of there, but again, it needs to be confirmed, otherwise it'll have to be, we'll have to do something else in January.
If not, we, the, the council can pull money out of the non-reverting fund, and that's used for things like, you remember when you sent me the capital expenditures report so that I could forecast out over the next 10 years? You know, in three years, I'm gonna need a plotter, in five years, I'm gonna need to upgrade the fleet of vehicles over a two-year revolving period, I'm gonna need printers and computers. So we filled all that out. We've estimated the, the budget that we're gonna need. I'm already at a surplus. By the time I get done training the AI, eliminating redundancies, and implementing the other modernization tactics that I'm employing in that department, we'll have even more. And there's a breakdown. Some of that goes into the non-reverting fund that funds my operations so that I don't have to come to you folks very often, and then some of it goes directly into the general fund, so that you can spend it on whatever you want.
Okay.
Mr. Pressle, you, you indicated an $81,000 number. Is that inclusive of the 3% raise that all of the department's got, or how did you come up with that?
This would have been before, this is off the recommendation from the plan commission.
Ah.
That's, that's the dollar amount they set for, so that wouldn't, I believe, have that 3% in there.
Okay.
And I know, Mr. Paul, and you say that we can use that from the non-reverting fund, but Mr. Auditor, can you verify that for me, please?
You cannot use, what he suggested was not that you use it for salary. What he suggested was that you switch things around, so that if you already have something, you would transfer the money for, let's say, supplies, just to make this very simple. You put it into payroll, and then you then say, okay, from the non-reverting fund, I now need to pay for supplies. That's what he's talking about. So it's not like we're taking it directly and using it for salaries, because that we cannot.
Extra step in there. We can work with the auditor to make it happen, and if they determine that we don't have the money, I'll give it up. We have, we'll, we'll generate the revenue.
Mr. Paul, when you collect fees in your department, do those go into the general fund, or do they go into this non-reverting fund?
The permit fees go into the general fund. The contractor registration fees go into the non-reverting fund.
See.
Fines and other stuff goes into an unsafe building fund that I use to condemn properties and give them the wrecking ball.
All right, so just for clarity's sake, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Pressle, second by Mr. Keel. Any further discussion?
I just, maybe that, just like to make a comment, I think Mike's done a good job in there since he's taken over, but I don't have to say it to anybody. Say it, and everybody knows this already. We are really gonna be tight this year, and $80,400 for salary and 3% raise on top of that. It's, I'm reluctant to-
I don't think the motion included the 3% raise on top of it, it's something in the middle of that.
Correct. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine with that if we cut the 3% off of there.
Yeah, just to keep it at the $80,000 is an option. I guess, I also have the same concerns that Mr. Mullenhauer has about increasing salaries in a time when we have a substantial budget deficit. That being said, you've provided a wealth of information here, and it looks like your pay at $65,000 would be less than what other building commissioners would be paid. So I don't like to see us getting uncompetitive with pay, because that leads to other problems down the line.
I agree. We, we'll keep the revenue up. Again, I'm fine with this being performance-based. For one, it's not an increase, it's just stopping it from reverting back down to the lower. And when I institute the, the floodplain permits, well, right now, it's all regular general permitting, I'm gonna institute another permit that's gonna generate another fee. We will be able to generate fees and cut costs that more than make up for that, and if I can't do it, I'll, I'll give it up.
All right. With that said, yes, Mr. Paul?
$80,000 flat, is that the most-
$81,250.
$81,250. Unless you'd prefer it to be the $80,227 that it is pre, currently.
That's a 2024 seller.
Yeah, 2024. I'm not sure what it is then. Maybe it's $81,000.
I believe it is.
All right. So motions at $81,250. Any further discussion? That'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Six-two, or six-one?
Six-one or five-two. I have a six-one.
I have a six-one.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
At this point, I'd point out that Mr. Bannock has joined us on Zoom and is available to, to discuss his request.
All right.
Recall, I'd like to recall my tabled motion, then.
All right. Recall my second.
All right. Motion, so all in favor of removing the Michigan Township Assessor's request off the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Bannock?
Good evening, council.
Good evening. Could you please walk through the roles and responsibilities of the commercial slash income clerk?
Yes, so the, the commercial income deputy here handles our income-producing properties. So every year, either single family or multifamily have to submit a rental questionnaire. That information has to be inputted into our system and calculated, some through our system, some by hand. And the other role of that is the commercial part. So anything over five units is considered commercial, so they have to be calculated by hand. Also, they're in charge of all commercial properties, reassessing them, handling any appeals, any questions on the phones from taxpayers, business owners, attorneys, things like that. So if they're not doing the rental data entry or work like that, they're working on commercial reassessments, land and improvements.
Any questions from the council?
Is there anyone else in your office that does commercial assessments?
Um, no, that role is specifically for commercial. We do have a small office here. There's myself, my chief deputy, I have a residential employee, and other than that, I handle commercial, but everyone is really focused on residential, that's a majority of our parcels.
Gotcha. I thought you guys had somebody else listed on your website for commercial stuff.
Uh, we did, yeah. There is a, a commercial deputy for, in the LaPorte office, if that's what you saw.
Any further questions? If that'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mullenhauer. Second by Mrs. Heath. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Thanks for coming on, Brett.
Thank you, appreciate it. Have a good night.
You, too.
Thanks.
All right. Our last item for new business, 2026 county council meeting dates. So I have a copy, did we all have a copy or my-
Everybody was sent a copy of it individually, it was sent, then it was in the packet. Two key factors to keep into consideration that we've had trouble with in the past. So the May meeting is typically the fourth one, and that's Memorial Day, so we've typically had to move it to Wednesday, because on Tuesday night, the fourth Tuesday night of the month, there's another meeting here, and rather than pull rank or anything, we just let it be, and we pull it up on Wednesday night. That, that's the only change. September usually runs into another issue where the AIC conference, it has been confirmed- September usually runs into another issue where the AIC conference, it has been confirmed that the AIC conference is the week before. So we do not have that conflict and have to move the meeting back or forth. The rest are in respect to the general, um, general holidays, and that's it.
Does anybody know what Easter lands on?
April 5th, Sunday, April 5th.
April 5th? Okay, thank you.
So it's not even close on that one. Okay.
Unless there's any further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
What is your motion?
To accept the meeting dates for 2026.
All right.
Yes, I second that. I figured that's what she was doing, but I could always withdraw my second.
Unless there's any other discussion, all in favor of accepting the meeting dates for 2026 as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get those posted.
Thank you very much. Moving on to appropriations, the Port County Sheriff requesting additional appropriation for personnel due to promotion in the amount of $2,270.
Now, you making all that noise back there?
Yeah, quit throwing chairs.
I don't know what happened. The chairs started falling. I don't know if you have any, I'm Al out with chief deputy, so I don't know if you have any questions, but it's pretty self-explanatory.
Of course we do. If Ron's not here, we demand an inquisition.
That's okay. We, it's from a promotion. We had a retirement and the difference in our steps. So that's the difference in the shortfall.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Out of?
Is that coming from?
Lit Public Safety.
Thank you.
All right. So are you good with that one, Mr. Pressle?
Yep, yep. Your lit's fine.
All right. So a motion to approve out of Lit from Mr. Pressle, second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Al.
Yep.
Port County Building Maintenance requesting $96,000 to cover a number of different things, unpaid invoices, sewage pump, pit pump, so on and so forth.
Yes, Mr. Yagowski, care if I go through this or?
Yeah, go for it.
All right.
As member that illustrious maintenance.
Yeah, thank you very much. You did that for me. So the Marcus, that's the, that is no additional fee. That's just the money that's going to be, that was in the rear that has to be paid up.
Okay.
That clears everything up for 2025.
Do you, do you know how far back that was?
This was around the beginning of the year, about March, March. Thank you, thank you. First quarter.
Okay. We'll go with Q1.
The sewage pump was a failure pump that we had to go ahead and replace. So we had to get it installed right away. That's the cost for the sewage pump. Captain waits to come to the council on that one. As long, as much as the pit pump also that failed, that was different two months that they had to replace. As you know, her supplies this year were not enough to be able to reimburse any of those expenses. Supplies, toilet paper, trash. I don't know, you remember that one?
Toilet paper and trash? No, I think she just said she was short on them.
Short on that one, yeah. Generator rental is the last rental cost for this year is gone now. That's the last bill is owed.
Okay.
And Otis Elevator was the balance because they, again, they were taking money out last year for this year, and it was the balance that had to be paid that we didn't, that we did not have enough money for in the account.
Okay. So Ms. Davis called me earlier today. Is my understanding that we were paying for the generator out of the Otis Elevator account for this? So it's, it's appropriate category of funds, but we'd have been better off transferring.
Correct. This was the previous person that had that position.
Any further questions?
Not many questions, just for everybody's information. We have hired people now that are actually physically going and fixing things. They're carpenters, they're tile people, they're, they put carpet down. So they're actually doing the work now. We're doing less and less of, doing our own work now.
Good.
Their people were hired just recently, so we have a good staff crew right now.
Full staff?
Full staff.
All right.
I think we need a part-time janitors or something like that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the 96 out of Lit Economic Development.
Can I recommend Riverboat?
You can. I can change that to Riverboat.
Thank you.
All right. Motion by Mr. Kessler out of Riverboat, second by Mr. Mullenhauer. Any further discussion? All in favor of the additional appropriation of $96,000 out of Riverboat signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
It's my committee.
All right. Moving on to transfers or permission to spend or appropriate. The Port County Juvenile Service Center in the amount of $500 from?
Motion to approve, Mr. President, from 4910.
Second.
Motion to approve out of the stated account, second from, motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Kessler. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Port County Circuit Court Clerk requesting permission to spend $7,500 from?
The Clerk's Record Perpetuation Fund 1119.
Thank you. For the purchase of scanners.
The scanners are needed. They did come in from the committee. We approved it.
Okay.
The, the only recommendation is that we change the account to be a 400 account instead of a 30120 that was listed here. So that's just a minor thing, so it shouldn't stop this from going forward. And there's certainly more than enough money to pay for it. There's over $400,000 in that account.
All right. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of scanners.
Second.
So a motion by Mrs. Heath, second by Mr. Kessler. Any further questions? All in favor of permission to spend $7,500 for scanners signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Fort County Recorder requesting permission to spend or transfer $4,000 from? Can you tell, help me out on the accounts here?
This has to do with the elected officials' training fund.
Thank you.
It has been overspent. More has been used out of it than typical. So for next year, I would really like to contact the five offices that can use it and basically split it evenly. And then they'll have to keep track of what they're spending, and once they get past their amount, that's it. Because I have no way of knowing who spends how much when until the bills are turned in. Just to give a very basic example, let's say the auditor's office in the last, what, two months, there were two different conferences. Registration for three people to two different conferences was $1,500. That's a lot of money. And so we go through it pretty quick, and it's only $12,000 budget.
Okay, but if you're going to point me out, then let's talk about other people who went to five conferences this year. So let's not point me out.
Well, that's the earliest one that is.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
As a personal thing.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beji, real quick, if, based on her, uh, quarterback's suggestion of splitting this up five ways, we would have to do so by revising the ordinance that created the fund, correct? That one's created by statute.
Is this state statute? Toby, you just told me the state statute. Let me take a look at the statute.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, the Port County Adult Probation requesting to spend appropriate not to exceed $8,000 from user fees to purchase replacement of existing desktop computers for Laporte and Michigan City offices.
Came from the committee. It's been approved, Mr. President.
Okay, so it's been cleared by the IT committee. Anything you'd like to present, Mr. Iraick?
No, existing is a loose term for the computers.
It was.
Couple of them are hanging on barely, so. And the other appropriation is for the laptop software and computer backpacks for Superior Court for Judge Magistrate Link, I believe.
Motion to approve.
It's coming out of probation fees.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Pressle. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Port County Circuit Court requests permission to transfer from legal intern to interpreter in the amount of $3,500. Has anybody had any contact with Circuit Court?
Yes. I'm sorry, it's, I'm at fault for not being here because, for them not being here because this is just a transfer. There's funds available to do so. They do not have an intern currently, so therefore they want to utilize the funds for something else. And that's all it is. It's as simple, it's an internal thing. Because it's going in and out of a 100 account or a payroll account, they need your permission.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve out of, for Mr. Kessler. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Heath. It's going to be one of those nights, Brett. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And just a quick question. I wasn't sure, adult probation, they wanted to spend $1,000 out of another account. Did you handle that too? There was, I have down requesting to spend no more than $1,000 for four items from adult probation user fee for Circuit Court.
So there's two things here. There's $8,000 not to.
So it's been on the agenda for a while, top of the next page.
No, I don't have it on mine.
Not on our agenda.
This for Circuit Court.
What I have?
Well, then if it's not on the agenda.
But it's permission to spend probation fees.
Still needs to be appropriated.
It's already, you know.
Yeah, it's because it's not on our agenda and no information here.
Is this advertised?
No, it's not. So then just move, you'll just need to move it along. Our motion to support will move it along.
So what do we?
And we'll have to pick it up.
So what are we moving along?
It's a Circuit Court request for, how much, Mike?
1,000, up to 1,000.
To be paid out of probation user fees for their, one of their rooms, they're trying to get it prepared for witnesses and victims, and they're just trying to, I think they're getting a couch and a chair. Is that what the, do you have that invoice or is that?
No, this is all I have in front of me right now. I do know that there was a, one of the, one of the courts was requesting furniture for children. So if that's the one, then.
I had sent that, but yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion to support.
Support, only, right?
Yeah, and then we'll clean it up as soon as possible.
All right. So did I have a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to support by Mr. Mullenhauer. Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. As long as we can work to get more of these on the agenda instead.
Yeah, I had sent it in, I just didn't know where it was.
We may not have seen it in time for the cutoff because we have a big cutoff, an early cutoff, which will change next year.
Okay.
Longer cutoff, we'll have more time?
Shorter cutoff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll have more time than.
Moving on to Superior Court III requesting transfer due to staff retirement from Psychological Services to personnel in the amount of $357. Let's make this a quick discussion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. By Mr. Pressle, second by Mr. Yagowski. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
You've got it great.
All right. And our last item, Laporte County IT requesting motion of support to spend not to exceed $25,000 for three-year renewal for firewall protection.
No, they gave $1,000.
Correct. I replace these every three years. It's not something that's in my budget. We just have to come back every three years. It's the updated devices along with three-year support and maintenance on it for the updates.
Any reason it's not in your budget typically?
I only do it every three years.
Okay.
So.
It was the whole thing about.
It used to be in my budget, and then they said come back, so.
You guys want to change it, but it was.
Nope, just more or less question, informational.
It was because you're obligating the next term of somebody else.
This could be something to include in your capital projects plan, so those were budgeting things we see flagged every three years that it needs to be funded. I'm wondering, though, why wasn't this included in the additional appropriations advertisement so that way it could be appropriated tonight?
So there was some emails, so I had requested, but some emails got missed and it didn't get on the additional. And it doesn't have to actually be replaced till February, so I won't be ordering it till later in December with pain in January. So we still have time to be able to.
Still have time. I prefer to just appropriate it at our December meeting then.
Oh, I didn't know you were having one.
We are now.
Okay.
Just for you.
That's fine. It just, it has to be here and updated by, you know, in February. So just get it on the agenda for December.
That's probably best. Mr. Yagowski?
Please. Please.
Yeah.
All right. If that's where we're going to go, then I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on.